So we started a meeting with, started a meeting with the land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that the land in which we gather is the traditional onceded territory of the Mi'kmaq First Nation. And call to order, I am just going down to the podium. So I'm gonna start off with the presentation of the Key to the City. And I do wanna welcome Regis, Dr. Regis Duffy, his wife Joanne, his daughter Maureen, and her partner Dylan, and I believe grandchildren Arie, Vida, and Leila. Correct? So, and I do wanna recognize our former C O, Harry Gooding, his wife Sandra, and of course, can't forget to recognize our good friend who was, great portrait is up there on the wall, Mayor Tex McDonald. Great to see you, Tex. So, I'll start off by saying that a key to the city is presented to honor visitors or residents that the mayor and council wished to recognize. This tradition dates to medieval, medieval times when the gates to historic cities were kept locked and only the most trusted individuals were allowed to enter and travel freely. A key is one of the city's highest honors, and it's only presented to those whose actions are consistent with the city's vision, mission, and goals. Today, we are here to honor Dr. Regis and Joanne Duffy. For their contributions to our community. Regis Duffy was born in King Cora. He earned a Bachelor of Earths from Saint Dunson's University in 1953, and a P H D in Chemistry from Fordham University in 1962. He returned to Prince Edward Island where he was appointed professor and Chair of the Chemistry Department at Saint Dunson's University, and becoming U P E I's first Dean of Science in 1969. The next, the next year, Regis founded Diagnostic Chemicals Limited, known to most of us as D C L, a chemical manufacturing company. Initially started to create summer employment for his students. D C L expanded throughout North America, and its products served hospitals, labs, and clinics around the world. Joanne Duffy, who was born and raised in Elmira, the other end of Prince Edward Island, and the oldest, the oldest of six children. After, after high school, she taught nine grades in a one-room school for a year, and then left the island to pursue her education and teaching career in Montreal. She has a Bachelor of Earths from State University of New York at Plattsburgh, and a Bachelor of Education from the University of Montreal. And in 1973, when Regis was on a university-related tour in the Montreal area, a mutual friend introduced him to Joanne. He then entered, he then introduced Joanne to the world of science and to his fledgling company, D C L. They got married, settled in Charlottetown, raised three children. Maureen's here tonight with her children and her partner, and found, and found the time and passion to become immersed with the community, the university, and the school system. What's truly impressive is that they did this while expanding the company often using their kitchen table as a reception, shipping and receiving, packaging, and accounting headquarters, and providing employment for islanders. Two thousand seven was a big year for the Duffys in business. D C L sold its diagnostic division and began operating the chemical, chemical division under the name BioVector Inc. And if you drive out to Brackley Point Row down Aviation Drive, you'll see that plant just continues to expand every year, and I believe has expanded out in Windsor, Nova Scotia. So BioVector has been a true success story. After serving as Chair of the U P E I Board of Governors from 1996 to 2006, Dr. Duffy was named Board Chair Emeritus in 2007 for his contributions as a board member and Chair, and for his many years of service to the community. Additional honors Regis has received include becoming a member of the Order of Canada, being inducted into the P E I Prince Edward Island Business Hall of Fame, and then being an honor, being honored recipient of the Order of Prince Edward Island, as well as the Earnest and Young Entrepreneur of the Year, Atlantic Lifetime Achievement Award. Not least, he was also a member of the Charlottetown Cities Council and Chair of the Finance Committee from 1989 to 1997. And I must say, he kept the books in good, good financial position. Now, Harry told me that many times there was surpluses. Was that true, Harry? Regis is the founding Chair of the Prince Edward Island Bio Alliance, P E I Bio Alliance, a leadership organization for the bioscience cluster, and a member of the N R C Institute for Marine Bioscience Institute for Nutri, Nutri Science and, Nutri Science and Health Advisory Committee. To recognize the couple, U P E I opened a state-of-the-art Bioscience and Health Research Center in 2006, and named it Regis and Joanne Duffy Research Center. They've been generous supporters of Holland College since 2009. Their investments have contributed to student aid, the establishment of, establishment of the Florence Simmons Performance Hall, and the revitalization of the Culinary Institute of Canada. To help them manage their varied involvements, they established the, they established the Joanne and Regis Duffy Foundation, which supports a wide variety of organizations, primarily in Prince Edward Island, and focuses on education, health, culture, and youth activities. Their business has employed hundreds of islanders, and became a model for entrepreneurship and economic development in our province. Their wisdom, their time, and financial support have provided many islanders with opportunities otherwise considered impossible. They are outstanding business people, mentors, philanthropists, and by giving them a key to the city, we're telling everyone that Joanne and Regis Duffy are valued residents, and trusted, and respected friends of the city of Charlottetown. And Regis, I would like to just read out this citation that goes as part of the key that we'll present to you. So, "On this twenty-eighth day of May, in the year 2024, I, Philip Brown, Mayor of this great city of Charlottetown, do hereby present Dr. Regis and Joanne Duffy with the key to the city of Charlottetown. This prestigious presentation is in appreciation with, in appreciation, recognition of their innovation and significant contributions, contributions to the business community in the field of science and pharmaceutical industry, where they have put Charlottetown on the map, as well as their philanthropist contributions to the community through the Joanne and Regis Duffy Foundation. With this honorary key to our beautiful city, the birthplace of Confederation, we sincerely thank Dr. Regis Duffy and his wife Joanne Duffy for your exemplary community service over the years."
Thank you, Mayor Brown. It's a privilege to get the key of the city, of course. But as you know, nowadays, when we go into a hotel, they don't have a key. Now, I'm in discussion with the mayor, but I'd like to get one of these smart cards, where you just tap, and money falls into your, you know, your, your barrel, or whatever you have as a container. Now, those discussions are ongoing, and this, this thing has not been solved yet. So in light of these remarks, I'll simply say thanks. It's wonderful to be here. I am very comfortable in this room, because my memories are very happy. And, you know, I congratulate all the people here that are serving the city, and taking care of the rest of us. And that's really what we do when we're in public life. And I was, I was a friend of Frank, Frank Zachamas. And Frank said, went to me one day, "Why don't you do something useful, and come down and be a counselor?" Now, you know, I was a country boy from potato country in King Cora, and I did have a lot of experience at Saint Dunson's, and the University of P E I, because I was on the administrative part of it. And I understood, you know, how important salaries were, fringe benefits were, pensions were. And so when I come down here, and started my journey, you know, the first thing I noticed that Harry Gooding was buying Canada Savings Bonds, high, high-interest bonds, and that was, they were going into the pension fund. And I thought that this is a pretty smart guy. But however, there was no pension, there was no pension plan here. There was no fringe benefit plan here. And I was, after I left the university, I started a company, and what I did was transfer the pension and fringe benefit plans to Diagnostic Chemicals. And when I come down here, Harry and I did the same thing. We set up the pension plan, we got it going, and with all the fringe benefits, you know, long-term disability, pension, medical term insurance, long-term disability, and I realized that, you know, from an employer's point of view, and from a worker's point of view, nothing could be more important. Because after you, your salary is spent, at least if your pension plans are well-invested, you know, when you're thirty-five or forty, by the time you're sixty-five, you should have a good chunk of cash, if it's well-invested, and being well-invested is an important part of it. You just can't hand it over to somebody and say, "Do something with it." You know, you have to be able to access it online, and things of that sort. So anyway, there was no strict budgeting process here when I landed either, and it was informal, it worked okay. But I mean, we got the, you know, we got the budgeting process together, and anyway, in terms of the things that were, happened down here, I think that the amalgamation of the five communities around us was one of the important things. And it was kind of contentious, you know, we didn't know whether Stratford was in or out. Of course, we hadn't a damn thing to do with the decision, because the provincial government was going to make it, one way or the other. But anyway, there was another little problem, and the problem was, West Royal had taxes that were about a fifth of what Charlottetown had. And so, of course, if we're going to amalgamate, the tax regime has to be the same for everybody. So anyway, I mean, I did a lot of discussing about this, and, you know, there's gonna be war here if the taxes go up next year by a factor of five. So anyway, the practical solution was to phase it in over five years. So everybody complained a lot, but in the final analysis, you know, we got away kind of unscathed, if I can use that word, it wasn't quite that simple. But anyway, thanks very much. It's been a pleasure being here, it's been a pleasure serving the community, and I congratulate everybody that's, you know, times have changed. P E I is not the same place as it was ten or fifty, or twenty years ago, and we're facing the same problems and opportunities as everybody else, you know? You and I have never seen people down with signs saying, "I want to stay on P E I." That's part of a new phenomenon, and it's part of a new world. And you can say, "Well, that's their problem." However, the fact is, it's all our problem, so that's part of the new world. Thank you very much.
Joanne, do you wanna say a few words? I'm gonna get Joanne to say a few words.
Okay, okay.
Come on over. Is she there, Joanne?
Go ahead, go say something.
I just came up to help him back to the seat.
That's a boring excuse.
Anyway, I'm not great at making speeches, but the years that he, that he was here at City Hall, he was in his happy place. He loved the, he loved the people, he loved the, the job, and he loved being Finance Chair, so.
Thank you, Joanne. I just wanna read this out. So, Joanne Regis, I'm just gonna read aloud, "Key to the City Presented to Dr. Regis and Joanne Duffy in recognition of your exemplary community service presented by Mayor Philip Brown and City Council, May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four." Thank you very much. Thank you. You're all right? Thanks, Joanne.
Right there.
Just while you're going down there, Regis, I know we were talking about a couple of individuals from King Cora, and I remember a comment made by Counselor Beck, he said, "There's a lot of, a lot of smart people down there in King Cora," and I said, "You know what to, keep this in mind too, Norman, they're all Catholics." But there is one quick story I like to share that Dr. Keith told me. Dr. Keith and his family grew up in the same community as Dr. Regis Duffy, and Dr. Keith talked about the, I think it was nineteen sixty-four, their, their barn, their dairy barn burnt down, and Dr. Regis's father went down with one of his prize cows, and may, and said to Dr. Keith's, Dr. Keith's father, "Here's some milk for the kiddies." And that's how kind of a, that's the kind of a neighborhood, that's the, that's the kind of community he grew up in, that just continued to expand itself into our community. So, Dr. Regis, Joanne, and your family, thank you, thank you very much. So we're gonna go into a recess. All you have to do, we're just gonna go into the Parkdale Room, and there is a reception there for the Dr. Regis and Joanne Duffy and family. So please come in and join us for twenty, thirty minutes or less. Thank you, we'll be back shortly. We'll be back shortly.
Thank you for your patience. I know that the Duffy family and friends were very pleased with the presentation and the reception, and thank you for your patience. So I have number two declarations of conflict of interest. Any declarations of conflict of interest? On the agenda, we have four A, B, and then five is to go into a closed session. We do have some of the members that will be part of that closed session in the hallway. So I need someone to move the approval of the agenda, moved by Deputy Mayor Yankov, seconded by councillor Ramsay, all those in favor. Okay. Councillor Drane, are you there? If he comes in just semi a text. Okay. Okay. Presentation resolutions. A, development charges study presentation. Hemson Consulting, Chief Engineer Scott, do you want to start off?
Thank you, worship. So today we have representatives from Hemson Consulting, Jackie and Stephan. They're going to talk to you folks a little bit about development charges. Number of months ago, we passed a resolution to do a study on development charges for the city and how those would be calculated and what that could look. So Hemson's here is today. We don't have numbers today, but the goal of today is to kind of inform you folks on what development charges are, how they can benefit the city, and how they will go about figuring out those charges at the end of day that we will present to you folks later this summer, early fall for future considerations. So I'll let them take over now.
Just before they start, Mr. Adams, could we look, is it a 15-minute presentation?
It's about 20 minutes, Mr. Mayor.
20 minutes? Okay. We're just trying to hold within that because we have some other items on the agenda, and there may be an opportunity for some questions, too. So we can stretch right away.
No problems.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Scott, and members of council. My name is Stefan Četranović, and this is Jackie Hall. And as Scott mentioned, we work at Hemson Consulting in Toronto. We've been retained by the council to prepare a development charges background study for the city. And I'm here to speak to you briefly about what development charges are, how they might be used in the Charlotte Town context. There's no decisions we're asking of council this evening. We're simply going to go through how development charges work, how other municipalities in Canada use them, the relevant legislation in PEI, which is the Planning Act, which governs how they can be used here. We'll talk a little bit about the background study process, which is a requirement of the Planning Act, and ultimately, that's what we are here to help you prepare. And then finish up by talking about the key decisions that you as council will need to make should you wish to impose development charges and the immediate next steps that we're going to undertake over the next month. But I do want to sort of set the table a little bit for this discussion by reminding you what you, I'm sure, are already aware of, and that is that Charlotte Town is undergoing very rapid population growth right now. In fact, the fastest rate of growth that you've seen since the 1940s. So if you look at the graph on the left there, that's 1,200 new residents per year between 2016 and 2022, and in 2023, just last year, 2,500 new residents, much higher than what we've seen in the last 20 or 30 years. And this growing population has triggered a heightened demand for housing in the city. It's led to a record-high level of housing construction. If you look at the graph on the right there at the bottom, you can see that more than 500 homes were completed in Charlotte Town in 2021 and 2022, 500 homes each year. That figure's fallen a little bit in the last 12 months. And this substantial growth presents challenges for the city because, A, significant investments, especially in core engineering infrastructure, are required to meet the needs of this new development, and B, the city doesn't have many tools to pay for these investments. This is not a problem that's unique to Charlotte Town, by the way. It's common to all fast-growing municipalities in Canada. And one of the solutions, actually, that fast-growing municipalities in Canada employ to deal with this is to impose development charges. They're imposed on development to pay for growth-related capital costs, so it's capital costs only, and only to the extent that they are related to constructing new facilities, expanding existing infrastructure to meet the needs of the new developing areas. The principle behind them is that growth should pay for itself, so that the financial burden of expanding the facilities, paying for the new infrastructure, isn't borne by your existing taxpayers and existing utility rate payers. Certainly where Jackie and I do a lot of our work in Southern Ontario, but also in BC and Alberta, development charges are a vital source of revenue for this kind of infrastructure. They certainly don't solve the problem of managing growth, and they certainly don't solve the problem of the fiscal challenges associated with managing growth. First of all, they only fund the initial round of capital costs, so they'll buy you the infrastructure, and they'll pay for the planning and the acquisition costs, but they can't be used to fund the maintenance, the repair, the rehabilitation, and ultimately the replacement of that infrastructure once it's been purchased. And I don't know about Charlotte Town, but if experience is anything to go by, most of your capital expenditures will be related to those long-term lifecycle asset management costs. They won't be for the upfront capital costs. Also, there are limitations on how you can use development charges. So there will only be certain services that you can use the charges to pay for, and we'll talk a little bit about that in a second. And there may well be other limitations on what costs are eligible for this kind of funding, and of course, as I mentioned, the maintenance costs, the repair costs, they're ineligible as well. There are currently no municipalities in PEI that levy development charges, but your provincial planning act does allow for them to be imposed. The legislation provides for the DCs to be imposed by a bylaw, and the bylaw has a maximum life of five years before it needs to be renewed, and when you renew it, and indeed, when you pass it for the first time, you have to undertake a background study, and that's what we've been retained to help you with. And there's a provision for a public process as well, so you have to provide public notice of the bylaw, and there's also a provision for ministerial approval of the bylaw as well. The act identifies the services for which the charges can be imposed, and they're listed here in the top bullet there, so water supply, wastewater or sewage, stormwater, transportation, which is going to include a whole range of elements within a road right-of-way, and it could, for example, in Charlotte Town, include, you know, a lot of the investments that are being contemplated for multi-use trail expansion, electrical power generation, which we don't think would form part of this background study, and there are other purposes prescribed by regulation, but none have been prescribed as yet. So it's really that core engineering infrastructure. You can fund the facilities, the pipes, the infrastructure itself, and you can also use the charges to pay for land acquisition. So that could come into play, for example, with the land acquisition costs that the city might incur for a new transit facility. And there are also studies costs that can be included as well. You can use the charges to pay for onsite as well as off-site capital costs, and I think it's become clear from our meetings today that in Charlotte Town, most of what's going to be covered would be off-site costs. So this would be infrastructure that's outside the area of a plan of subdivision, broad, city-wide benefiting infrastructure. The act states what the services are eligible for the funding, and you've done a lot of detailed work here in the city to establish what kind of infrastructure might be needed through engineering master servicing plans. There's a public transit plan, which is being brought forward to you in a matter of weeks. Each of these plans has looked at the cost drivers of different types of infrastructure in some detail, so there's a very good basis for establishing the infrastructure needs of the development that is anticipated to occur. The development charges can help, certainly on the water and wastewater side, they can help mitigate the pressure on your utility rates, which I know have increased quite substantially in recent years to achieve full cost recovery. On the stormwater and transportation side, which includes transit, they can help reduce pressure on your property taxes, because those services are almost overwhelmingly funded through property taxes and, you know, upper-level government grants. But note that the development charges cannot be used to help pay for fire, police, other protection and emergency services, and recreation and parks, all of which have significant facility expansion needs in the coming years. The Planning Act, as I said, requires that a background study be undertaken and that it be commissioned by council, which, as Scott mentioned, we sort of take to, we assume that that's already been done through your resolution to retain us to do the study. The study is going to have to lay out a list of growth-related capital projects. Those projects, as I say, will reflect council's intentions that has been expressed through your approval of master plans, engineering master plans, capital budgets. So there'll be nothing in this study that has not already been reviewed by this mayor and council. We don't intend this study to replace any of those important and detailed master planning exercises. To that extent, we think that, as I said earlier, there's a very good basis for establishing a charge. A lot of research has been done that can establish a credible, reasonable, correct charge that will meet the tests that are set out in the Planning Act. The methodology we intend to use for the study is one that will be very common across the country. Step one will be to do a forecast of future development, what might be anticipated to occur. Step two will be to identify
...Act, which governs how they can be used here. We'll talk a little bit about the background study process, which is a requirement of the Planning Act. And ultimately, that's what we are here to help you prepare. And then finish up by talking about the key decisions that you as council will need to make should you wish to impose development charges and the immediate next steps that we're going to undertake over the next month. But I do want to sort of set the table a little bit for this discussion by reminding you what you, I'm sure, are already aware of, and that is that Charlottetown is undergoing very rapid population growth right now. In fact, the fastest rate of growth that you've seen since the 1940s. So if you look at the graph on the left there, that's 1,200 new residents per year between 2016 and 2022. And in 2023, just last year, 2,500 new residents. Much higher than what we've seen in the last 20 or 30 years. And this growing population has triggered a heightened demand for housing in the city. It's led to a record-high level of housing construction. If you look at the graph on the right there at the bottom, you can see that more than 500 homes were completed in Charlottetown in 2021 and 2022. 500 homes each year. That figure's fallen a little bit in the last 12 months. And this substantial growth presents challenges for the city because, A, significant investments, especially in core engineering infrastructure, are required to meet the needs of this new development; and B, the city doesn't have many tools to pay for these investments. This is not a problem that's unique to Charlottetown, by the way. It's common to all fast-growing municipalities in Canada. And one of the solutions, actually, that fast-growing municipalities in Canada employ to deal with this is to impose development charges. They're imposed on development to pay for growth-related capital costs, so it's capital costs only, and only to the extent that they are related to constructing new facilities, expanding existing infrastructure to meet the needs of the new developing areas. The principle behind them is that growth should pay for itself, so that the financial burden of expanding the facilities, paying for the new infrastructure, isn't borne by your existing taxpayers and existing utility rate payers. Certainly where Jackie and I do a lot of our work in Southern Ontario, but also in B.C. and Alberta, development charges are a vital source of revenue for this kind of infrastructure. They certainly don't solve the problem of managing growth, and they certainly don't solve the problem of the fiscal challenges associated with managing growth. First of all, they only fund the initial round of capital costs. So they'll buy you the infrastructure, and they'll pay for the planning and the acquisition costs. But they can't be used to fund the maintenance, the repair, the rehabilitation, and ultimately the replacement of that infrastructure once it's been purchased. And I don't know about Charlottetown, but if experience is anything to go by, most of your capital expenditures will be related to those long-term lifecycle asset management costs. They won't be for the upfront capital costs. Also, there are limitations on how you can use development charges. So there will only be certain services that you can use the charges to pay for, and we'll talk a little bit about that in a second. And there may well be other limitations on what costs are eligible for this kind of funding. And of course, as I mentioned, the maintenance costs, the repair costs, they're ineligible as well. There are currently no municipalities in P.E.I. that levy development charges, but your provincial Planning Act does allow for them to be imposed. The legislation provides for the D.C.s to be imposed by a bylaw, and the bylaw has a maximum life of five years before it needs to be renewed and when you renew it. And indeed, when you pass it for the first time, you have to undertake a background study, and that's what we've been retained to help you with. And there's a provision for a public process as well, so you have to provide public notice of the bylaw. And there's also a provision for ministerial approval of the bylaw as well. The Act identifies the services for which the charges can be imposed, and they're listed here in the top bullet there. So water supply, wastewater or sewage, stormwater, transportation, which is going to include a whole range of elements within a road right-of-way. And it could, for example, in Charlottetown, include, you know, a lot of the investments that are being contemplated for multi-use trail expansion. Electrical power generation, which we don't think would form part of this background study. And there are other purposes prescribed by regulation, but none have been prescribed as yet. So it's really that core engineering infrastructure. You can fund the facilities, the pipes, the infrastructure itself, and you can also use the charges to pay for land acquisition. So that could come into play, for example, with the land acquisition costs that the city might incur for a new transit facility. And there are also studies' costs that can be included as well. You can use the charges to pay for onsite as well as off-site capital costs. And I think it's become clear from our meetings today that in Charlottetown, most of what's going to be covered would be off-site costs. So this would be infrastructure that's outside the area of a plan of subdivision. Broad, citywide benefiting infrastructure. The Act states what the services are eligible for the funding, and you've done a lot of detailed work here in the city to establish what kind of infrastructure might be needed through engineering master servicing plans. There's a public transit plan, which is being brought forward to you in a matter of weeks. Each of these plans has looked at the cost drivers of different types of infrastructure in some detail, so there's a very good basis for establishing the infrastructure needs of the development that is anticipated to occur. The development charges can help, certainly on the water and wastewater side, they can help mitigate the pressure on your utility rates, which I know have increased quite substantially in recent years to achieve full-cost recovery. On the stormwater and transportation side, which includes transit, they can help reduce pressure on your property taxes, because those services are almost overwhelmingly funded through property taxes and, you know, upper-level government grants. But note that the development charges cannot be used to help pay for fire, police, other protection and emergency services, and recreation and parks, all of which have significant facility expansion needs in the coming years. The Planning Act, as I said, requires that a background study be undertaken and that it be commissioned by council, which, as Scott mentioned, we sort of take to, we assume that that's already been done through your resolution to retain us to do the study. The study is going to have to lay out a list of growth-related capital projects. Those projects, as I say, will reflect council's intentions that has been expressed through your approval of master plans, engineering master plans, capital budgets. So there'll be nothing in this study that has not already been reviewed by this mayor and council. We don't intend this study to replace any of those important and detailed master planning exercises. To that extent, we think that there's, as I said earlier, there's a very good basis for establishing a charge. A lot of research has been done that can establish a credible, reasonable, correct charge that will meet the tests that are set out in the Planning Act. The methodology we intend to use for the study is one that will be very common across the country. Step one will be to do a forecast of future development, what might be anticipated to occur. Step two will be to identify the infrastructure needs of that development. Step three will be to identify any external grant funding that might be available to pay for that infrastructure, as well as any portions of the cost of that infrastructure that might benefit the existing residents of Charlottetown. And those costs will be removed from the charge calculation. And what will be left, then, is a pool of costs that are eligible for development charge funding, and they'll be recovered, if they're passed, they'll be recovered as a charge per unit on the residential sector. Typically, municipalities would have a higher unit charge for larger units, or a higher charge for a single detached home, and a smaller charge for a townhome or an apartment home to reflect the fact there are fewer people living in the smaller units. And then on the non-residential side, the charge would typically be imposed as a charge per square meter of new building floor area. Some of the methodological decisions we have to make over the coming weeks are whether to calculate a charge that would apply uniformly across the city, so every developer would pay the same regardless of where they develop, or whether the charge should apply, a different charge should apply in different areas of the city to reflect the different costs of providing services. And I think most of the meetings we've had today lead us to believe that a citywide uniform approach would be best, because most of the investments that we're contemplating for this study would have a broad, citywide benefit. We're going to have to establish a planning period over which to calculate the charge, and right now, we're thinking 10 years would be an appropriate planning horizon. And then we're obviously going to have to do a forecast of development, and there's lots of good studies that have been done in recent years on which we can start with that. And we have a subconsultant upland based out of Halifax who've been working on your official plan and will be helping us with the development forecast. As I say, you know, a key part of this exercise will be to develop a list of growth-related capital works, and we have some very good studies that have been completed or are underway to help us with that. We're not constrained, like we are in Ontario, for example, on sort of historical levels of service for determining what the future needs might be. So we're probably going to root the project list on what the city is actually planning to do and the standards it is planning to achieve. And in some cases, in transit, for example, that might include higher standards or higher ridership targets than what currently exists. So there will be some important decisions, of course, along the way for council to consider as we go through the process. Certainly, we will want to show you, well before you ever consider a bylaw, what the list of growth-related projects are in the background study and what the growth-related costs are that are included in the charges. We will also want to propose to you a rate structure. So how do the charges apply? Is it a higher charge for a single detached home and a lower charge for an apartment? Is it a flat rate for all non-residential developers? Or should we differentiate between a commercial developer and an industrial developer? There's quite a few options there as well. So we will lay that out for you when we meet you next, and well before you have to make a decision about how much the charge should be, if indeed, a charge should be imposed. I do want to stress here that our background study will show you the maximum charge you can impose under the Planning Act. So it'll give you an anchor from which to make decisions from. Of course, you're under no obligation to charge that rate, and you can charge whatever rate you want, if it's a lower charge, if it's a charge that's phased in, if it's delayed. There's all sorts of different options, and we will sort of lay out the menu for you of what those options are, again, well in advance. And then finally, there may well be types of development in Charlottetown that you don't want to have to pay the development charge at all. And certainly, we are aware that there's a sensitivity about housing affordability in the city right now, and certainly you have policies in place to exempt affordable housing from certain kinds of fees. So this is perhaps an opportunity to tie in those existing policies with the development charge framework moving through this process. The process itself is well underway. We've had our kickoff meetings, and we've met with all of the representatives of staff of all the engineering departments today. So our heads are full of, you know, the growth in the city and the projects that are ongoing and underway. And this month, in the month of June, we'll be finalizing the development forecast, finalizing the list of projects and calculating the rates. We are aiming to release the background study in August and coming back to you at the end of August to present the results of the rate calculations. And then in September, consult with the local development industry and the general public about what rate options might be at play and get their feedback on what council might wish to do, before returning back to council in October for you to consider a bylaw and rate options, with a view ultimately to getting a bylaw in place in time for the November capital budget process. And I think most of this slide is sort of a little repetitive of what I've already said. This is a very consultative process. We're going to be working very closely with staff in most of the, certainly, most of the engineering operations department, planning department, finance department. We've met them all today. We're consulting regularly with them over the coming months. We will have draft rates sometime in the summer. We will proceed with the background study in August, and we'll play things out from there. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, for the time, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Floor is open for the questions. Counselor Twill.
Well, I thank you for your presentation. It's very comprehensive, very detailed. As you pointed out at the beginning of your presentation, it's, I guess, it's a template for studies that are taking place across Canada. You're examining other municipalities and the challenges that they face, cost recovery. You talked about how you met with staff, and you're going to be further collaborations with staff. I think one of the missing key components in this exercise, or maybe you're going to move in that direction, is the impact and effect on the private sector. For example, developers building single-family homes, residential multi-units business. I've talked to, I talk to these people on a daily basis, and they're finding it extremely difficult with the cost of, you know, building supplies, cost of permits, just the cost of doing business. And I'm not sure if we're there yet where it becomes a major deterrent, but nonetheless, it's extremely challenging. So one of the questions I wanted to ask you is that, in the process that you embarked upon, are you going to be reaching out to the members of the private sector? They're key stakeholders in this entire equation as well. In fact, I would argue, they play an indispensable role as to whether or not your community, your municipality, actually flourishes or not, or becomes stagnated, or, well, you know, we can't go there because the cost of doing business is just too enormous. It's just, you know, out of our, out of our, out of our range. And I'm not, again, I'm not sure if you're going to be, you know, expanding your research and taking into consideration the members of the private sector, but I believe that is a major key component. And I'm wondering if you could help me with that part of the equation.
Counselor Twill, just before he answers, could you just put up the timeline slide that you had there? I think that talked about, you know, your first meetings in March, May. I think it clearly, it's pretty good. It's near the end. Yeah, just keep going, keep going. Right there. So is that, can you use that as a template for your answer?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This is where I would have taken you, and thank you, counselor. So through you, Mr. Mayor, you can see that where it says, "Present draft rates to industry stakeholders," and certainly, we discussed this with the, with staff today as to how we might best engage the private sector. They are, after all, the people who will, you know, be writing the checks if development charges are ultimately imposed here, or, because you shouldn't say developers, but certainly the home builders, because the charges would probably be imposed at the time of building permit issuance. But certainly, we want to hear from members of the development industry and the home building industry in Charlottetown. And I think the consensus, preliminary consensus we had today was that a special meeting with those stakeholders outside a more general public meeting would be appropriate for this process.
Counsel, I'm going to go Counselor Beck, then come back to you, Counselor Twill. Counselor Beck.
He can finish off if you want. Excellent. Okay, so you're going to set aside, I think, just one opportunity where all the stakeholders are going to be invited into a public forum. Can you give me an example of what type of methodology you will be executing to reach out to the stakeholders to ensure that, you know, there is, there are many opportunities for them. It's not just, you know, a short window, that the window's wide enough, so that they're going to have that opportunity to be able to become involved in the discussions, offer their, you know, offer their, you know, their perspective, offer their challenges, offer, you know, the hardships that they're experiencing. And again, I want to reiterate that a lot of members of the private sector right now, you know, just a simple duplex, $460,000 for one side, and the prices, and the cost doing business is going to escalate to a point where, you know what? We have to weigh, it's really not worth it. It's really not worth it. And again, it becomes more of a deterrent, and if other municipalities are not elevating that cost, then they're in a better position than we are. So those are things, to my mind, that I have a lot of interest in.
When I answer, then I'll get to Counselor Macleary and then Counselor Beck. Yeah, that's what I just asked him.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Happy to. So certainly, I think that there's a commitment, certainly on our part and on staff's part, to engage meaningfully with the private sector. I don't think it necessarily needs to be once. It can be done in different forums, and I agree with the counselor that there should be enough opportunity for the industry to be able to weigh the results of the background study, to provide written submissions to council, to have those submissions responded to in writing if necessary, and to allow different forums to allow, to provide their feedback, whether it's more of an informal session directly with us and staff, or whether it's a more formal public meeting in front of council. We're certainly open to all of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Macleary.
Thank you, Mayor Brown, and thank you for your presentation. Just, you referenced the P.E.I. Planning Act allows for development charges, and near the end of your presentation, you talked about, you know, wherever ultimately the city and council gets with this decision. There are maximum charges, you indicated, you know, under the Planning Act. Are you familiar, would they be detailed in any way as to terms of how they're allocated or differentiated? Like, you know, you talk about residential, commercial. Is there any? And just, and just in a second, another one. You referenced a 10-year period in your, in your presentation, and just if you could context that for me, what you were referring to on that. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, counselor, and through you, Mr. Mayor. So the Planning Act doesn't prescribe a maximum charge for the city, nor does it prescribe, I forget the second part of your question, sorry.
In terms of a distinction between residential, commercial?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, it doesn't prescribe a rate structure either. So there's quite a lot of flexibility given to municipalities here to make those decisions for themselves. I think you're, so our background study will provide several options in that respect. I think on the residential side, there's more consensus across the country about how to, how to structure a charge. And there's perhaps a little bit more difference, different approaches for the non-residential sector, and we discussed that with staff today. So we will certainly make you aware of the different options, but that will be a decision that ultimately will be in your hands. And as for the 10 years, I think we want to make sure that the charge is calculated based on the city's best knowledge about what future infrastructure requirements are. And right now, the extent of the knowledge of the infrastructure needs beyond 10 years is perhaps a little fuzzier than it is within the five- or 10-year horizon.
Thank you. Counselor Beck, and then Counselor Matarde.
Yeah, thank you for your presentation, again. This is certainly new to me, but I do have a question on page four. I want to go back to there. And if you look at that graph, we're looking at two distinct types of development. The top photo being a traditional subdivision, looks like combination of maybe R2, maybe R1, I'm not sure. The one below looks more like a, I don't know, stack house, row house development. In these sorts of developments, what does a D.C. look like? How is it, in general terms, how do we, you know, if I'm looking at, if I'm looking up at the, say, the top one, I just picked the top one off the top of my head, how do I, what am I getting charged, or what am I looking at, or what am I potentially looking at if I'm a developer and I'm going to be going in with either one of those developments? Just in general sense, you're getting too terribly detailed, just to give me a general idea of what it might look like. Thanks.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. And this is, this is quite a good way to frame this. So in the top right-hand corner there, so this would be the, the site that is sort of graded, but perhaps lots haven't yet been delineated. So this would be a little bit, the charge wouldn't be imposed at this stage. It would be imposed at the point at which this particular developer was ready to pull a building permit on a lot that had been laid out and approved through a plan of subdivision. And the charge would be imposed at that stage, not for any of the infrastructure that you would see on the site here, but it would be imposed to pay for road improvements on the arterial and collector road network in the city to deal with additional traffic flow. The upsizing of trunk water mains and sewer mains to deal with the additional capacity arising from this particular subdivision, and perhaps expansion at the treatment plant that might be required to deal with that additional capacity. The expansion of transit routes to cope with additional transit ridership arising from this subdivision. So those would be the sorts of things that would be included in the development charge for this site.
Your worship?
Go ahead.
So when the construction comes, take the top one, once they build a unit, that's when the cost is, that's when the D.C. is implemented. In the one below, where you have multiple units being built, assumedly at the same time, they're probably going there at the same time. they're probably going there at the same time, is it a per-unit charge? Or is it a per one unit, like if there's eight units in one? Or is it each of those eight units that's being charged, the development charge?
Yeah, three, Mr. Mayor. So in the in the example below, this would be a separate charge for each of the units. These are, I think, townhomes, so they would, in a in a structure that differentiated between single detached homes, like the one perhaps in the photo above, they might pay a lower charge than the charge that would be imposed on the homes that are built in the in the land above.
Councillor Tarde.
Thank you, your worship, and thank you very much for your presentation. Just to build off of the concerns addressed by councillor Twill, I'm thinking about the consultations that should be occurring with the with the industry stakeholders. And looking on slide 15, which somewhat outlines a bit of a timeline, I would think that we should adjust that so those stakeholder consultations are happening immediately versus, I'm not quite sure what it meant by present draft rates to industry stakeholders. That would lead me to believe decisions have already been made and some, not decisions have been made, but some planning has occurred and things are going to be presented as opposed to consulted upon. So I think it'd be prudent to bring those in, bring those stakeholders in, whatever that looks like, at the early stages. That'd be right around now. And then coming in at the end and presenting some of the other findings which we'd have. So if I'm interpreting this timeline that way, that would be my recommendation to build upon the concerns of having industry stakeholders involved in the discussions, the study, et cetera. It feels like they're coming in at the end to be presented with rates and things that are, they're going to say, we had no, we had no say in this or no communication or collaboration around that. So again, if I'm misinterpreting that and that's different, I think it should be at the front end, just to point that out.
Just take note of that? Okay. Councillor Twill.
In your discussions or in your examination, meeting with different managers with cities corporation, a couple of issues that I've always been, I don't know, determined to, I believe, should be a better better arrangement when it comes to cost recovery is in the is in the Water and Sewer Department. We have our manager here, Richard McKeown. You probably have already had discussions with with our manager. For example, when residents outside the municipalities, outside the boundaries, are looking for our services to tap into that infrastructure, what would be? I'm interested to know, from your perspective, what would be a fair, you know, a fair cost to recovery? That is, the, you know, the infrastructure and then the the actual service. You know, should it be 25%? Should it be 50%? Because I've long argued that folks are not living inside the municipality, but they want to take advantage of the service. So it's great to take advantage of the service when the taxpayers are paying high taxes and the city are paying for those services. So to my mind, if you live outside the city, and I could be totally wrong, I could be totally wrong here, but you kind of get the best of both worlds, because you're not, you don't have to pay those taxes or not at that level. When I'm talking taxes, I'm talking property assessment and and all the other, all the all the other services that are provided. And the other, the issue I'd like to, I'm sure you're going to examine is the arrangement that we have with the town of Stratford. You know, that financial arrangement, I I've always been under the guiding principle that, you know, it's a pretty, I call it sweetheart deal, the arrangement that we have at Stratford. They pipe their sludge over, we charge them a certain amount, and and that's it. And I think there's got to be, to my mind, a better, a better formula for cost recovery. And again, I'm no expert. I I brought that up a number of times and and Mr. McKeown knows that as well. I'd like, I'm hoping you're going to examine that as well. You know, when we're looking to do cost recovery, doing a cost recovery with another neighboring municipality. What's fair, what's not fair? And even you can even take into consideration our recreational facilities as well.
Okay. Did you want to answer that now? Because I want to, councillor Ramsay has a question too, but go ahead.
Sure, Mr. Mayor. So I live in Toronto. I'm very familiar with this this problem. And I just want to be clear that, to the extent that the city has arrangements with other municipalities to provide services, within the development charge framework, we will only be including in the charge the costs that accrue to the city. So we will not be including in any charge that's imposed on the private sector in Charlottetown any costs that are being triggered by development outside Charlottetown. So that that will definitely be the case. And I do agree with the general principle, although I'm I'm not qualified to speak to the specifics because we're not retained to look at your utility rate model. But certainly, I, to the extent that we do a lot of work in this area, absolutely, I support the notion of full cost recovery when it comes to charging for services that are provided to external authorities or other municipalities.
Councillor Ramsay.
Thank you for your presentations. And this is just a statement, I'm just waiting to see when all the, when all the numbers come in and everything, see where we can sit. Because it looks like if we approve this in the future, it's going to be funding an awful lot of departments. And I'm just wondering what the rate is going to be at that time and see if, like, it's almost like a wish list that we're sort of banking a lot of things with the city on this one project, you know, for extra income. And, you know, we've got to be very careful what we're doing here. So I I'm waiting for the, like, the final report and that and just see where where the numbers are. Thank you very much.
And just just on the the Planning Act, those areas that where we could look at development cost, they must be in the regulations, not the act itself, correct?
No, three, Mr. Mayor, they are in the act, yes.
They are in the act.
There is a provision for regulations to add or modify the list of services, but there hasn't been a regulation made yet.
So you checked off water, wastewater, stormwater, transportation roads, sidewalks, and active transport. Stormwater, I know back in 2003, 2004, any new developments required to put in a stormwater system. So that's that can be checked off. It's just the other water and wastewater. And as for, working with the other, like, we're within the capital region, just like, as you said, about the GTA. Well, we're in the capital region. So if we were applying or charging development charges and our sister communities weren't, that could be a discouragement for investment in our own municipality. Is that something we should be should be concerned about? Or should we be looking at working as a capital region instead of one municipality against the other?
Well, through you, Mr. Mayor, I I think that certainly the province has provided this tool to all municipalities to pay for this kind of infrastructure. I would say that if other municipalities are experiencing the same kind of financial pressures that you are arising from the growth and development that is occurring, then certainly, this is something that other municipalities should be looking at.
Yeah, just just an addendum to that. We're a fully serviced municipality. If you go to our sister communities, they're getting services from the provincial government that are cost recovered or cost shared. So there's still an imbalance there. And as for development charges, I don't know how the stakeholders will respond to it, because another charge on top of another charge is, I think, something we have to be concerned about. Councillor Macleair.
Just, yeah, thank you, Mayor Brown. Just in general, do you have, your group or team have knowledge, understanding where development charges across the country, other municipalities, where this is in place? And and if it is, what's the response been and good, bad, indifferent? I'm just curious. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor, and through you, Mr. Mayor. So development charges are very common in Canada. Generally, the the fastest-growing places have the highest charges. So in Ontario, there are literally hundreds of municipalities that have charges in place, some of them very, very high indeed. And you can use the charges to pay for the full, essentially, the full range of municipal services with one or two exceptions, but certainly parks and recreation and fire and police and all that stuff. British Columbia is similar, and Alberta increasingly so. But the charges are also widespread in Saskatchewan. Jackie, my colleague here, did a background study for the Halifax Regional Municipality a few years ago. I think it was just before COVID. And at that time, the municipal, the municipal council deferred a decision on implementing them. The study was updated again last year, and a decision has yet to be made on implementing them. But I understand one is forthcoming. But there is no other municipality that we're aware of in Atlantic Canada that has a development charge. There are some local charges, and there are some charges for off-site services that are quite localized, but not a sort of comprehensive development charge. I don't know, Jackie, if you want to add to that? And in Quebec, they are, they are very common as well.
Thank you very much for your presentation. It was a very excellent presentation. I think, Madam Chair, it'll be followed up through Public Works and that it through other departments. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a few resolutions. Scott, are you going to stay with this? Okay. So do you want to read the first resolution? Yep, go ahead.
I'd like to just bring up a couple of points before we get into the two resolutions.
With her?
Pardon me?
With them?
No, 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 no.
It's not on the agenda.
It's regarding the two resolutions that council is going to entertain.
Well, bring them, bring them. No, 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 let, bring them up when they come on the floor.
No, no, but they're not, it's not so much about the resolutions, it's about the process.
Yeah, well, you can bring that up when the resolution's read. That's why you put a resolution on the floor. Let's read the first resolution.
That's how you do it, right? Go ahead.
Moved by councillor McCabe, seconded by councillor Macleair. Be it resolved that council, as for the conditions of the public tender for 2024 Street Resurfacing Package A, accepts the low submission of the Island Construction Limited in the amount of $1,654,793.70, plus all applicable taxes, and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Okay, councillor Twill.
It's not much of a particular resolution, it's about the process on how the management of the department has has arrived at the conclusion of putting forth these recommendations to the Public Works Committee. And then Public Works Committee entertains a motion, passes it on to City Council for for council's consideration of vote. So the two items are, and I brought this up at Public Works, and it's not really associated with any particular company being awarded a contract, it's about the process itself. One is, in some of the contracts that the that the city council entertains, there's a rating system. For example, manager of Public Works would get together with a couple of other folks in the planning department, or maybe someone from the finance department, and there'd be a formula, and there'd be a rating system. And that rating system would be illustrated in the package as to, here are the scores, and here's how we arrived at this decision. So that's my, that's my first question, Mr. Mayor. I asked, was there a rating system in how these decisions were arrived at? And again, it's not, I'm not zeroing in on a particular company. I just want to understand the process in terms of, did we have, or do we embark upon a rating system where we have in the past with other with other other resolutions that council has entertained? It's not, and it doesn't, it's not just necessarily with Public Works, it's Parks and Recreation and other departments as well. There always seems to be a rating system. And I don't know if that's associated with the open tender process or the request for proposals. I'd like to get an understanding as why there wasn't a rating system. And again, I'm not zeroing in on a particular company, I'm just zeroing in on the process. And that's my first question.
Okay. And I have councillor McCabe, Chair of the Public Works Standing Committee.
Councillor Twill sits on Public Works. And we were presented with the scientific slideshow in our committee level where the management showed us very vividly what streets were assessed this year and based on the data that they collected and criteria streets that were needing to be recommended. Based on the budget that we approved, there are so many streets.
I'm not asking that, Julie.
You're asking about data and how we select.
No, no, it's about the tender.
What about the tender?
Like, how we came to.
You're asking about the tender process?
Yes. Yes. Where was a.
There's criteria, but it's the same tender process that would go out.
No, just sit down, councillor Twill. Yep. So we have three bids. And the lowest, the lowest bid is Island Construction Limited. He's asking what other criteria was used to come to that lowest bid? Because in the past, we've given, we've we've passed resolutions for a higher tender price, but because of the point system.
And in our, were you, you were a committee when we discussed that?
Oh, yes.
And that it came recommended by staff, that they met all the criteria that were outlined in our tender document, and that they were the lowest bid, and that's why they recommended for us to approve. We don't have to approve it if we want to pay more. But Scott, would you like to add more to what?
No, she's, he's going to add some more.
Your worship, through to the councillor. So I think the confusion comes down to the type of document that is a public document looking for services. So when you, when you're going to buy, just say, I'm going to buy a laptop, it's a request for quotes. And so in a request for quotes, you would say, here's the type of laptop we want, and here's the specs that we want. And the individual, or the company will send back a document saying, here's the, here's the laptop that you think will meet your specs. The staff internally will look at that and say, if it meets the specs, yeah, it gets a three. Maybe it's a, doesn't have the same battery life that we want, okay, you get a two. So that might be where there's some scoring. There's also requests for proposals, which we use a lot when we're hiring consultants. And the reason why we go for proposals is we we get a report back from a consultant who's interested in doing the work. And it, the purpose of that proposal is for the consultant to sell themselves and tell us the methodology in how they're going to achieve our goal that we set out in in the document that we sent out to the public. Because it's a very challenging thing to put a very prescriptive description on how we think they should get it, because there's, they're going to have different methodologies depending on their skills and experiences with this type of work. The, for this type, for paving a road, we use a process called a tender. So a tender is a very prescriptive document. And what it says is, is a number of unit items. So in the document, we have, we list out a whole bunch of of items that the contractor has to do. One would be paving what we call seal mix. So that is the top coat of asphalt that you see on every road around the city. And in that document is specifically says the mixture, how it's to be tested, and what equipment it needs to be paid or used to be paved with. And we don't say, you know, a certain brand, we say, here are the specifications of the equipment that we accept. And then the last thing is, how are we going to pay you for that item? So typically, for asphalt, it's by the ton. And so for each ton of asphalt in that unit price that we pay, and we'll say it's $200, for every 200, for every ton of asphalt, for $200 we pay, that includes all the labor, all the equipment and material costs to lay that one ton of asphalt. And so with a tender document, because it's so prescriptive, contractors know their equipment. They're going to bid on the project based on if they can meet those specifications and by them signing on that dotted line and giving us what we call a bid bond in a security check, that is them guaranteeing that they can do the work as prescribed in the tender document. If they cannot, we stop work. If they cannot get the equipment and refuse to get the equipment, we can go to another contractor and use that security that they gave us at the beginning of the job to pay for the difference in cost. for the difference in cost. So at the end of the day, a tender is typically low bid along, as long as they meet the, as long as they say they can do the document and as long as all the items have been signed off and they submitted their schedules accordingly, um, and provide their insurance documents, there's a, there's a checklist of items that they have to provide at time of tendering, or time of, uh, tender closing, my apologies. Um, as long as they meet all those requirements, then we go to the low bid because that is in the best interest of the city. And then it's our duty from staff perspective to inspect that work, manage that work on a daily basis as those contractors are out there doing, and, and that's what we do. To award to someone a higher bid, we open ourselves up to liability, uh, because there's no scoring system at the end of the day. Um, so it's the best interest of the city and that's why we recommend a low bid. Again, as long as they say they can meet the specifications, um, there's nothing else that we would, we wouldn't, unless, unless they, we had poor performance with us in the past, uh, there'd be no reason why we wouldn't recommend the work.
Councillor Twill, just to wrap it up, but I just want to go back to what he just said. Just listen, uh, when we were tendering on the steel culverts for the province, you're right, they gave us the specs, we couldn't meet those specs and we were the low bend, low, low tender price. Our bond or our security would be taken to offset the difference between the two tenders. So basically it comes down just to the price and everything that's prescribed in that tender, whether it's asphalt quality, delivering that asphalt and so forth. Wrap it up councillor Twill, then we're going to vote on the tender. Go ahead.
I, I do have another question, but I'd like to finish this one off.
No, we're going, we're going to finish off this because there's a tender on, there's a.
So, so once again, Scott, I, I understand what you're saying, but there was no rating where, where yourself and another member of your staff and someone from the finance department would get together and evaluate and do an actual rating system besides the low, low tender. And again, I want to reiterate, I'm not zeroing in on a particular company, I'm just trying to understand why our rating systems, uh, you know, the, this, uh, the department or the, the rating committee, uh, rated, uh, um, this, this bid, regardless of what it is, regardless of what the price is, uh, this is what we come in. Here was a score and, and why was that not applied, uh, in these two particular resolutions? That's, that's a question and I do have a.
Yeah, you can follow that up in the next resolution. Uh, do you wish to answer that, Chair, or do you want to defer to the engineer and then we can vote on this? Because this is all bid related. Go ahead there, sir, because we want to start, we want to start paving roads. Go ahead.
Your worship through to the councillor. So the, when ratings come into play, and a really good example of that is when we go to tender for vehicles. So you can get Dodge, Ford and Chevy, they're all different vehicles, right? And so where the rating system comes in, it helps us ensure that each vehicle that are being submitted, you know, has the minimum specifications that we're, that we're looking for. There are some times though, it allows us a bit of flexibility, you know, for instance, maybe one of the, uh, one of the vehicles doesn't have the same, um, horsepower, for instance, that we were looking for. But because of the cost is lower than the vehicle that meets all the specs, that plays into a factor, right? And that's where we get a scoring system that combines the specifications. Are we willing to accept a little bit less of a, of a, of a item here, um, in this vehicle at a, but we save more money, you know? So that's where the scoring system helps us balance that out. Where, where, we're very prescriptive type, the asphalt type of liquid that they use, there's, there's nothing really to evaluate. We test every asphalt, uh, every road, uh, asphalt is tested to make sure they meet that minimum specification. Um, so at the end of the day, doesn't matter what contractor is putting down the, down the asphalt, that asphalt should be almost identical regardless, be, based on each contractor or meet that, those minimum specifications.
Okay. Councillor, councillor Ramsay, you calling the question?
You're right.
Question's called. Question, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay. Eight, zero.
In favor.
Oh, uh, I didn't know councillor Duran was there. Yay or nay councillor Duran?
In favor.
Okay. Can we read the next one, please?
Moved councillor McCabe, seconded by councillor Macleer. Be it resolved that council, as per the conditions of public tender for 2024 street resurfacing package B, accepts the low submission of M&amp;M Resources Incorporated in the amount of $1,586,283 plus all applicable taxes, and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Councillor Twill.
Again, I'd like to reinforce, this is not a, about a particular, uh, company that's going to be awarded the, uh, contract, it's about the process. So, uh, Scott, or I'm sorry, through the chair. Uh, are there benchmarks put in place? Are there, are there benchmarks and is there timeframes and timelines, uh, where there's an expectation for the work to be done? And, and if there are benchmarks, uh, what do those benchmarks consist of?
Chair, councillor McCabe, do you know those benchmarks or do you want to forward that on? I, I, I thought that might be in the tender, but you got the engineer here anyways. Okay. Benchmarks, timelines.
Uh, your worship through to the councillor. So yes, there are, uh, benchmarks in terms of the quality of material. Everything gets tested and rated against the, uh, the minimum specifications, which we follow the province, we use their specifications for asphalt. Um, and timelines, yes, we have certain dates where certain roads are supposed to be done. Now, there's a bit of flexibility because there are times that our crews, uh, may have not gotten to a road, um, where we were going to replace the sidewalk ahead of time, um, because there's a lot of work that we, our, our crews do and water and sewer do, uh, ahead of some of this paving work. Um, and so sometimes there's a bit of delay there and, and we have to shuffle the schedule a bit. Uh, but, uh, most streets, uh, do have a timeline that, uh, we, um, we work with the contract to make sure those, uh, those timelines are met.
Question?
Questions called.
Questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Councillor Duran, yay or nay?
In favor.
Okay. Um, Scott, could I just ask, is there going to be a package C coming out? Well, no, I, I, I think there's more money because we put 4.3 million.
So your worship, so when, when you look at the, I think it's around four million, if I'm not mistaken, I'll have to double check, but, uh, those prices you're looking at, we got to add 10% for taxes. Um, and then there's also, um, some fees for testing services that we include in there and the line painting, once the roads have been resurfaced. So once we start combing through the numbers and start seeing the, some of the roads paved, we do look at, kind of do a projection and see where, where we will be at or expect to be at by the end of the year. Um, and if we think there's sufficient number, money to add more, uh, uh, either add more streets to another package or come back to council and add another street or two to one of these packages, then that's what we'll do, but.
Look, guys, I'll tell you what, I've been driving around some of the streets this, and councillor Duran already raised it. You know, I think we're going to have to look at some more, another package. It's bad shape out there, it really is. And, and it's, it's time we put some money, uh, on the table for this because, and we've been saying this for the last couple of years. Um, now that 10%, that comes back to us under the municipal capital grant, uh, avenue, does it not?
Your worship, only 5% of that does. So we, when we, when we create a PO, we only raise it with 10% taxes, so automatically 5% is off the top. Um, and then the remaining five comes back at a later date to general revenue, so we just raise POs at 10% tax.
Councillor Twill, just sum her up there.
Yeah, I, I totally agree and I think we're.
Agree with me?
Oh, I've been preaching it as well.
Oh, go ahead.
You know, I'm sure you've heard me. Um, a lot of the neighborhood streets are, are, are in a, you know, terrible state. And, you know, Bayfield Street, Eden Street from Queen to, uh, University Avenue, Wendy Drive, Lower Douglas, I mean, you know, in some cases I would argue, you need a bulldozer down Bayfield Street, it's not bad. And it really is. So, uh, I think we need to concentrate in some of these neighborhood streets because the residents have waited a long, long, long time.
Okay. Next, uh, resolution there, CAO, Eleanor Mohammed.
Thank you, your worship. Moved by councillor McCabe, seconded by councillor Macleer. Be it resolved that council, as per the conditions, the public request for quotes for rectangular rapid flashing beacons, accepts the low submission of RK associates in the amount of $58,150 plus all applicable taxes, and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Well, look at that. More rapid lights. I'll tell you what, the ones out there in Capital Drive at the roundabout, we're out on Saturday with the CNIB trying to cross the road, people just don't, are not watching, they're not looking at them. Question? Oh, you got a question there councillor? Okay, wow, okay.
Wondering, your worship.
Go ahead.
Am I missing it? Oh, no, I, I found it. Now, right at the bottom, there's 20 units. I, I was just going to say, I didn't see it, the first couple of lines, I just wondered how many units this is going to buy. Thank you, Scott.
Councillor Beck.
Yeah, just wondering, uh, through to the chair or to Scott, do we have a kind of, we have a, a street, street repaving list created? Do we have a list of where these are targeted for? Do we have them places in mind? And if so, would that be available to us, just so we have an idea?
Your worship through to the councillor. So these aren't as prescriptive as, or set in stone as how we, how we rate our streets, right? We have a very prescriptive process on how we rate our streets. Typically, um, if we get complaints, um, we will evaluate those crosswalks on their merits for, uh, flashing lights. So there have been a few identified to date. If there are complaints in other locations, feel free, feel free to let us know. Um, we also do keep an eye out on some of our major through fairs as well, you know, um, like the Queen's Streets and the Mount Everest Roads and things like that. So, uh, this will do another 10 locations this year. Um, and so we'll, um, I'll ask my staff to, uh, provide a list of those locations that we have identified so far, but I believe we still have room for a few more, we just haven't done all the evaluations yet.
Is that good there councillor Beck? Thank you councillor McCabe. Question's called, all those in favor. Councillor Duran?
In favor.
Okay. Well, thank you, chief engineer. Yes. Councillor, uh, Bernard absent. Okay, we only have one item left and they are ready to come in. If you go to your closed package. I know, I know, I'm just saying that. Motion to move into a closed session? Closed session, I should say, closed session, as per section 119 subsection 1 of the Municipal Government Act. Section, uh, 119 subsection 1B, information received in confidence, which if disclosed would likely be prejudicial to the municipality or parties involved and subsection 119 subsection 1E, a matter still under consideration, consideration on which the council has not yet publicly announced a decision and about which discussion in public would likely prejudice a municipality's ability to carry out its negotiations. Moved by the deputy, Deputy Mayor Yankoff, seconded by councillor Ramsay. All those in favor? Councillor Duran?
In favor.
Okay. So we have, again.
Okay, all those in favor?
Yes.
Justice Tweal, yea or nay?
Yea or nay.
(laughing)
What do you think?